Ms. Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here. Item number two is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Steve Moore with Ten Mile Christian Church. If you will all join us in our community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Welcome Pastor Moore.
Thank you, honored to be here. Our Father who is in heaven, this week especially, we are grateful for the history that our nation has and the wisdom of our leaders to call us to have a day out of our calendar year to recognize how blessed we are and to have a sense of gratitude. God, we really are grateful for your good gifts, for your consistency and that you have blessed us with things that we tend to take for granted, but nevertheless are so valuable to us. God specifically, we thank you this evening for the quarter of a century or so of service that Mayor Tammy has given this community. And in this season of gratitude, I pray that you would bless her and she devotes more time to her family and we're grateful for her influence and it will live on. We pray for our new mayor, Robert, and that you, God, will begin to lead him and the team and the transition that's so important for our community, for our city. I thank you for these council members. And I pray, God, the awesome responsibility they have and the explosive growth that our community is experiencing to just manage all of that, God, because so easily growth can become the enemy of growth. And I just pray that they would have wisdom, that you would guide their decisions, all the things they have to balance and factors that many communities are never faced with, they're faced with, overwhelmed with. Pray for the decisions tonight that it will just truly be good for our community and for us as citizens. Pray that we would, you would put within us a desire to live as citizens and contribute what we can, all of us working together. We give you the glory, God, for the difference you've made in our lives, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving. Okay, item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There were no changes, so I move we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes, motion carried. Upcoming announcements, we will be closed on Thanksgiving and the day after. So, we wish you all a Thanksgiving, a happy Thanksgiving. And then on December 6th, a week from Friday, we have our Winterland Parade and Christmas Tree Lighting. It starts at 6:00 PM and we'd love to have you join us. Any other announcements? By council. Okay. Item six, under future meeting topics. It's a public forum, Mr. Clerk, can he sign up?
Madam Mayor, we need one sign up, Mr. Stephen Hunt.
Good evening and thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
All right. My name is Stephen Hunt. I reside at 5031 West Ravenscroft Street, Marion, Idaho, 83646.
Thank you, and can you pull that microphone a little closer? Thank you.
Sure, I can do that. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the growth that was mentioned in the invocation. On the corner of Cherry Lane and Black Cat Road, there are two new subdivisions going on, going in. One is called Burlingame Subdivision, the other one is called Millbrae. The Millbrae subdivision is being developed by a developer who is, works normally with CBH Homes and all of those homes, I am under the understanding, will be built as zoned and will be sold as single-family dwellings. But it's been brought to my attention that in the Burlingame subdivision, which is being developed by AMH Burlingame Development, which is America Homes for Rent. America Homes for Rent has a profile and that profile states they don't build homes to sell them. They buy or build and rent or lease. When this subdivision was first brought to the attention of the surrounding homeowners in this area, there was no talk about building a subdivision where all the homes would be for rent. It was not disclosed if that was the case. It's also been brought to my attention that this same developer has two more subdivisions underway here in Meridian. So, what I'm asking for tonight is that someone from the staff from planning and zoning assist me in educating not only the people surrounding Burlingame subdivision, all of those subdivisions, but the people surrounding the other two subdivisions that it's my understanding that are being developed by this developer. And to clarify, if my fears are correct in that the company profile is they don't build homes for sale, they build homes for rent.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention and certainly this is a public forum, so we can't have a dialogue. But I would suggest we put this on next week's agenda so we can have a discussion and ask staff maybe to bring back and our legal to bring back. When we do multifamily, we know it is for rent. When we do single-family, we're not told it's for rent. If this subdivision, or if this council approves something because they know it is a rental subdivision, then that's a deliberation and it's purposeful and there appears to be a difference. So, I guess we should have a dialogue next week and legal and planning can both bring information pertinent to this topic.
So, going one step further then, all subdivisions are required to have a homeowners association. The current homeowners associations that I'm aware of, and I'm the past president of Turnberry Crossing Homeowners Association, do not allow renters to even vote at homeowners association meetings because they don't own the property. So, if this is in fact the case, then the owner of the property who would be, someone who is on the board of directors for a homeowners association has to live in the subdivision. Almost every single CCNR in Meridian, Idaho, states that. You can't be on the board of directors of the HOA if you don't live in the subdivision.
Well, certainly we can have some of what you've discovered in talking with staff that this can be a conversation. If we post it on the agenda, we can have a conversation about it.
Very good.
So, thank you for bringing it and we hope you will join us next week as well.
I certainly will, thank you.
Thank you. And that was the only sign up?
That was the only sign up, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Item seven is under action items. 7A is Resolution 19-2177. These are resolutions to appoint our youth commissioners. And I do know that I see one, two. I even have my glasses on, how about that? So, as I look for your direction from council then, I would love to call both Logan and Isabel up and have them make any comments if they would like to introduce themselves to council and add anything additional to that. Counsel, I would stand for any questions. I'm really excited about the youth commissioners. They all are bringing a passion and an interest to those areas that they will be serving on and would love your approval.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve Resolution 19-2177.
I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution under item 7A. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh. Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. I'll ask Isabel if you'd like to come up. So, Isabel is passionate about our Solid Waste Advisory Commission. Tom came and talked to our youth council and he actually inspired several of our MIAC members to step up and say, "We want to be part of this." But Isabel had such a great deal of passion and could talk about different parts of the country that she has witnessed, different recycling practices. She's excited to bring that expertise to this commission. Welcome, and if you want to introduce a little bit about yourself.
My name is Isabel Carr. I was...
You want to pull that a little closer to you?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Isabel Carr. I am currently a junior at Renaissance High School. I was born in Oregon, have lived in Baltimore, Maryland, here and Fort Worth, Texas since then, and do a lot of traveling. So, as Madam Mayor mentioned, I have seen a lot of different recycling programs across the country and I am very excited to help institute and help grow this current recycling program here in Meridian with Solid Waste Advisory Commission.
And just to note that she has an interest in pursuing this beyond high school. Hopefully we don't damper that passion but instead fuel it because we need a lot more solutions and we appreciate your passion. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I've been a liaison to this Solid Waste Advisory Commission for the last six years and I know the council's very excited to have you on board. It's great to have you in the meeting yesterday. I'm sorry that I'm not going to be around next year, but I know whoever you're going to be working with will be very supportive of the commission. And I just wanted to welcome you and tell you they're really, really excited to have you.
Yes, and as I told you in our interviews, your voice is equal and it's important and we welcome you to our Solid Waste Advisory Commission. Thank you. Thank you for your dad for accompanying you. Okay, our next youth commissioner that's here is Logan. You want to come up? So, equally Logan has a lot of passion about the Arts Commission. He started the arts, an arts group at Renaissance High School and has engaged them. They've done fundraising material, or fundraising activities to promote certain forms of art, to buy supplies and I'm excited to have you and your passion on our Arts Commission. You want to introduce yourself, Logan?
I'm, oh, that's, I'm Logan. I go to Renaissance High School. I'm also a junior and I'm very passionate about art. I'm founder and president of my school's art club and I'm just really passionate. I also participate in other Meridian Arts Commission events like Art Reek and promote that throughout my school. And I just think it's a really great opportunity and I look forward to working with hopefully all of you in the near future.
And he's an artist himself.
Cool.
Welcome Logan, any questions from council?
Board, Mr. Logan.
And our Arts Commission liaison, is that Councilman Borton?
It is.
He looks forward to working with you. Just speaking on his behalf. Thank you, Logan. Okay, and I don't see any of our other youth commissioners. Did I miss someone? Okay. Thank you, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. You can if you want to, it's riveting. Okay, item 7B is an acceptance of the Ada County Canvas for the votes for the results of November 5th general election. Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, I put the results from the Ada County Clerk in the packet and I believe we are just required to have a vote accepting those results.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I move that we accept the Ada County Canvas of the votes for the November 5th, 2019 election.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve item 7B. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum. Apologies, Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 7C is a public hearing on our winter-spring 2020 fee schedule. Garrett, thank you for joining us.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me. In front of you, you have the winter-spring 2020 fees for our guide. That's tentatively set to come out December 6th, the day of our Christmas parade that you guys mentioned before in your announcements. With that, I stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to offer testimony on this item? Was there any signups?
Madam Mayor, there was one sign up, but I believe he may have been here for something else, James Hunter.
We love getting testimony on our fee schedule.
I know, thank you very much. Yeah, I inadvertently clicked the wrong thing. So, I was here for 7E, but I understand testimony's closed, so I accidentally pressed 7C. So, no testimony from me on this one.
That's great, I was really excited. We actually got someone to testify.
Volleyball fees.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was pickleball, wasn't it? I mean, that is what we get most of our comments on, so. Garrett, any further comments? Okay, counsel, any questions that you have or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on item 7.
Madam Mayor. I move that we close the public hearing on 7C.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing on 7C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Resolution under 7D, 19-2172 is a resolution adopting these fees. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-2172.
I have a motion in a second to approve item 7D. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 7 is a public hearing continued from November 19th for our new comprehensive plan H 2019-0101. This was continued not for public testimony, but written testimony and any additional questions from counsel to give them an opportunity to absorb what we heard last week and for staff to provide additional comment. We did receive a number of written testimony comments and those are all in our public record as well. And several are in front of you since we just got some today. So, I'm going to turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Caleb Hood. I'm the Planning Division Manager. I'm here with Brian McClure, also in Community Development Planning Associate. I'm really glad that we're not talking about shared vehicles. It's the comprehensive plan, so, yes, it is continued from last week. I thought what would be most productive is to kind of run through some of the themes that we heard last week. This isn't, what I'm about to cover isn't an exhaustive list of all public testimony that's been received in writing or verbally provided to you, but the ones that at least the staff believes are the outstanding issues. Again, there may be other ones, that's kind of the last bullet there. I want to leave some time for some other things that maybe you heard or read or saw or are aware of that you also want to address, but these are kind of the half a dozen, kind of larger outstanding issues, if you will, that we believe need to be addressed this evening in advance of adopting the plan. So, I'm going to run through these, kind of in that order that you see them on the screen there. And largely from last week's meeting, but it's, as the mayor mentioned, public testimony was still coming in as of like 3:30, there was another request, I think, for some comments, so. The first one, I've got titled this slide Low Density Residential, but that's not necessarily what this is all about, right? It's the ultra-low rural agricultural kind of heritage that you heard about that we are losing, quite frankly. Some of it is going away almost daily. A lot of that request, again, and I'm not here to rehash everything that was talked about, but really one of the main things that I think I heard anyways from the community was need for a lower-density designation within our comprehensive plan. As a refresher, city staff and the steering committee recommended removing the existing rural estate residential land use designation from the plan. That rural residential designation allows a minimum five-acre lot and anticipates no city sewer or water provisions. Staff and the steering committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission, to a certain extent, recommended that the low-density residential designation be beefed up and used instead of that rural designation. So, within the text of the plan, we try to make it clear that a transition to and respect for existing land uses is necessary. Through the development review process, staff looks at the adjacent existing land uses and the future land use map to help direct appropriate transition densities and designs of proposed new projects. So, there are, again, like I said, there are policies already in the draft plan. We thought to beef that up with an additional policy, which you see on the bottom of this slide, really hammers that home additionally to provide a minimum one-acre lot when development is proposed next to existing rural estate residential properties. The one caveat to that would be where you don't have to necessarily provide that minimum one-acre lot is where there's an existing road that separates those properties or there is a nice linear open space buffer that exists. So, then you wouldn't have to necessarily provide that one-acre lot. We still would be in most cases looking for a transition, so you're not necessarily out of that. Just wouldn't mean we wouldn't be necessarily explicitly looking for a one-acre lot because it doesn't directly butt up to that existing rural estate property. So, that's one of the things that since last week we've developed as staff, so I just want to make that clear. This is not, that has not been vetted through the steering committee, obviously, or the public, or you're seeing it too for the first time today. So, this is of staff's own doing here and this hasn't gone through that process that those other things. And the same can be said for the change to the low-density text that you see above. I will just quickly note that sample zoning we're going to talk about here in a minute, so that's why it's red. That, there may be some additional changes or tweaks or even removal of that, but that's why that's called out differently. The designation, the definition of low-density residential that's on the screen is what you saw last week. We haven't tweaked that anymore. We think that does, again, a pretty good job of describing what low-density is and does within the comp plan. But again, that is an outstanding issue for you to determine, so. So, while it is envisioned that many properties with a low-density residential designation will develop with more than one unit per acre, larger lots are appropriate in some instances. A low-density residential is not the rural estate designation that was added in 2012 and is proposed to be removed with this new plan. But with the proposed text changes staff just went through, we do believe that the intent to preserve and protect existing rural estate properties while allowing urban-level development to occur is achieved. So, that is, kind of issue one, if you will, summarized. So, Madam Mayor, members of council, I don't know how you want to tackle these. I'm not necessarily asking you to make a decision on all one of these. I was planning on running through it, but if you want to stop and have conversation, ask questions, I'll leave that up to you. So, I can run through my presentation and we can double back. Is that what everyone prefers to do? Okay.
What is your preference?
Madam Mayor. Oh, sorry.
Ms. Mylum.
I would prefer to tackle each item individually and discuss it and then move on to the next one personally.
Okay, so questions, comments?
Anybody else?
I think that's fine.
So, Madam Mayor, I guess...
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just to caveat, I think it's appropriate if council members have questions throughout this process that we should be chiming in. To Caleb's point, y'all just got to see this for the first time, some of us right before we sat down, so. We want some time to kind of think and process on it and so I guess just reserving the right to come back later.
Oh, you're always the...
For other questions or comments at a later point in time.
Anything else on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, one of the things that I made quite a few notes on was not just preserving the designation of rural, but preserving the lifestyle that went with it, such as animals and things like that. So, and I know right now I understand things correctly, you can't have the animals in the city limits even if you have the space. Is there any opportunities for grandfathering people that are there now to continue to have the animals until they sell the property or something?
Well, they will, they're not going to be annexed. They'll be a non-conforming use, but until they would come in for annexation, they're just a non-conforming use, I believe. Mr. Ted, Mr. Ted.
Attorney Barrett.
Barrett.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, while they're still in the county, it's an allowed county use. When they come in, they would become a non-conforming use.
If they don't change it.
If they don't change it. So, they can continue with what they've got until changes. So, the issue then that Councilmember Little Roberts is talking about is new people coming in wanting that lifestyle. Once the ownership changes, that use goes away or if the herd thins out, they can't replenish it. I mean, they can do that one at a time. It's really something that would need to be monitored, but that's the concept.
And that is really only after annexing, requesting annexation into the city. So, that is their choice.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, if I can, just circle back. And this isn't, it's not in the Unified Development Code, so it's not in the code that I'm most familiar with. But you can have livestock within the city limits. They just can't be a nuisance. So, it's in Title VI of City Code and it's titled Livestock Harbored on Private Property. It does not prohibit you from having livestock. What it says, and I'm going to paraphrase it, but it says, "It shall be unlawful to harbor or allow to remain within the corporate limits of the city any livestock which emits noises disturbing to residents of the city." You can have them as long as you're well behaved and they don't stink and make noises and those types of things. So, again, I mean, that's...
It's a dog.
So, it goes on, again, I said I was going to paraphrase. I'm not reading this, but it talks about stable refuse care. So, I mean, there's, you can have them, you just need to be good stewards of them. You can't, it can't be disturbing and a nuisance. That's the, that's the kind of caveat. And I realize that's not, animals are generally stinky, right? But that's where you're going to get. It's not outright prohibited when you annex. Doesn't mean you have to get rid of your horses or cows. It just means there's a, there's a standard there to maintain them.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Barrett.
I think it's also important that those who are in the county are able to continue, you know, farming and, you know, using, um, you know, there was a lady that, that I think she wrote, that, that gave testimony, an interesting testimony, uh, for sure, with slaughtering of animals, and that certainly happens on farms, um, just as long as they're able to continue that, um, that lifestyle in, in the county. I know that we don't have any purview over that, but that's, I think that would be important for them to be able to continue to do that. And I guess it would be on the developer, those who are moving around these farms, that they need to know that that's going to continue. And, and so if they're okay with that, then, then, uh...
Yeah, and you can't change that use.
Right.
Only the county commissioners can.
Right. Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
As to the, the low-density issue and, and what you've proposed here, it seems to me to try to blend a lot of the public comment that we received and planning and zoning recognized, and there's so much discussion about concepts such as ultra-low density or an alternative to rural, and, and a lot of that valuable feedback seemed to try to capture what you're trying to capture here. So I think utilizing a more robust narrative and definition of what low-density residential is intended to be makes the guide a greater guide, not only for the property owners in that designation or adjacent to it, but also to the developers and to the elected officials to know the general intent of what that property should be at some point, should it annex into the city. So I think this is really helpful, and I think the policy you've provided below appears to try to blend those principles and try to encourage and capture the, the more, um, I think a little more thoughtful transition with some of those county uses that, that are, um, in or adjacent to these low-density areas. So I think this, at first blush, this is really helpful. I think it's a valuable and appears to be a very reasonable compromise to capture those principles that we heard from the public. And we heard a lot from the public about that issue, um, and the rural heritage and... So at, at first blush, I think it's, it's well done.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
Um, Caleb, I definitely think this is an improvement from, um, from, from the original plan. However, we did hear a lot of testimony regarding ultra-rural, and it seems like the steering committee was in favor of that. And I'm just trying to figure out why there's so much resistance. I feel like there's, like, we can't have certain areas that are maybe one-acre parcels. We've had, we've had a lot of testimony saying, even if it was just one acre, you know, so that I don't have my property with four, you know, four or five neighbors backed up to me. Um, I, I think that is an appropriate zoning for certain, you know, little areas. And, um, and what, and if somebody has four and a half acres, this doesn't do them any good. So it does give some, some transition for particular pieces of property, but it doesn't really answer the question as a whole. I'm still struggling with that one.
So, Madam Mayor, if I can just maybe provide a, a little bit of, of context to that. You're, you're right, Councilman Mylum. The, the new policy would not necessarily explicitly help that four-and-a-half-acre parcel. However, there are other policies that still talk about adequate, providing an adequate transition to adjacent properties. This one is directly responding to the five-acre, that rural estate property. You could have a two- or three-acre parcel, and we have other policies that talk about an appropriate transition. If you try to strip out 10 homes next to that two-acre parcel, staff's still going to say, "That's not appropriate transition." You're right, it's not explicitly, this, this one doesn't explicitly help that situation. Um, but again, that, this one coupled with the other policies that are in the plan, we think does help guide what an appropriate transition should look like through the use of lot sizes, buffers, streets, connectivity, linear open spaces, those types of things. So, again, you, you get to decide that ultimately, but I just want to say there are other things than what you see on the screen that, that try to reinforce the need to transition from one lot size to another. Um, again, even if they're not rural estate, if it's a 20,000-square-foot city lot, we're still going to want to see a transition to, you know, an appropriate transition from that lot to a proposed project too, even if it's medium-density. Um, so transition kind of rings throughout in, in the plan. I guess just one point of clarification, there are members of the steering committee that weren't in favor of removing the rural estate, but as a whole, the steering committee did recommend what you see before you and went through the planning and zoning commission as to remove the rural estate residential. Again, you can, you can put that back or some version of that back in the plan, um, but that was not the consensus of the steering committee to draft up or keep the, the current rural estate designation in the city.
Madam Mayor? Follow-up. Uh, thank you. So, and that, I guess was, should have been my original question to you. Um, so there's, it's kind of twofold. How, when you, when the steering committee made decisions, how were the decisions made? Was it by majority vote? Was it by, you know, did somebody overrule somebody else? Was it like, "Well, we, we take your opinion and we'll think about it?" And the second part of that is, what changed after the steering committee was done with it? What did staff change? Those are two different questions.
So, Madam Mayor, I, I think I can handle those, and Brian, feel free to jump in. So the, the first part of that, we, we generally try to work off consensus. We did not always agree on everything that came out. And we had the conversation, though, as we got to reviewing the, the draft final version that we felt comfortable putting out there for the public to, to review, we knew there were sticking points. And quite frankly, there were probably sticking points for every single member of that steering committee. No one was 100% happy, including staff, with what was going to go out to the public. And we asked the question, should we vote? Does it need to be unanimous? You know, we, we generally want everyone to agree to this thing, but there's 500 policies. If you don't agree with one or two of them, does that mean you don't vote in favor of the, the plan? And that's kind of the same thing I would ask you. A vast majority of this, do you, and maybe there's one or two that you really, is not your favorite, but when you're trying to work together on something, does it... So to answer a question more bluntly, we didn't vote. There were some folks that weren't super keen on this going forward, but we had a super-majority, a vast majority of the steering committee members that were in favor of the draft that went out for public review early July. Um, the second part of your, the second question is, it's a little more detailed. We really, so we tried to respect that process as staff. We tried to say, "Yep, it's been vetted through the steering committee," and then we had to open to the public for five weeks, and then the application was submitted. I think there were two, so I need to be careful here, because there were some text changes in the slide from last week where we slightly tweaked some things. Um, I might even have that slide that I can show you. So there were some small text changes. None of them, I, in my opinion, they weren't substantial. It doesn't warrant going back out to the public. They were pretty nitpicky, if you will, but, but we think it still had, added some value enough to, to make the changes. And there was one area, and that area was the Magic View Woodbridge area, that we did not agree with the steering committee, and we, I, you know, hate to use the term, but we vetoed what the steering committee, and we said, except for that, that was the one area where we said, "That is just, we, as a city, we, we can't go forward doing nothing in that area." So aside from that, though, what the planning and zoning commission reviewed is what the steering committee recommended. But were those one map change and four or five text changes, but again, they were pretty minor. Now, I may have missed something, so I'm going to make sure that Brian helped write the staff report too, so.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, uh, Councilman Mylum, there, there was one other small adjustment in the El Gato.
Brian, can you speak a little louder? Thank you.
There was one other small change in the El Gato Cherry Lane Railroad area. Uh, we adjusted some of the industrial in that area to be, uh, office to better transition to some of the adjacent residential. The vast majority of the area was, was that, but that was called out in the staff report as a change.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Barrett.
Piggyback on Mr. Borton's comments, um, and what staff said earlier, just, just a couple of questions. What exactly is, would you consider to be like a linear transitional barrier between like these, these rural estate law, you know, parcels and like a proposed, you know, application or subdivision next to it?
Madam Mayor, if I understand the question, I, I believe you're looking probably at the new policy down there in linear open space? Is that, is that the question? Like, what would qualify as that, or?
Yeah, like something that would, that would, that would be like a natural transition between the larger lots to the smaller lots.
Besides lot size?
Yeah.
Um, and again, so open space can be that, so if you put your, the park for the subdivision next to that, um, you know, that could be something, and again, we're going to be looking for appropriateness of that. How, how large are the large estate lots next to the, not, next to those ones? Um, sometimes something as narrow as 20 feet may be enough of a, you know, a, a common area park light, you know, with a, with a pathway running down it and, and something like that. Other times, it may need to be more substantial. Again, depending on the location of where some of those homes sit, even on their lots, play into that, to, to what's appropriate. But that's just an example of what could be done to transition then to smaller lots on the other side. It's, it's hard, and that's kind of the, at the heart of the comp plan, why it's not a one-size-fits-all. There's so many things that factor into what's appropriate. You got to look at what's going on around, and is that the, the, do we envision that being a 50- or 75-year structure that's there, or do we see that even being raised in the next 20 years? And again, where is that cited on that property? And what's this project proposing, and what's the interplay there? So, sorry, I can't answer your question directly, but, um, again, it, it is case by case. An open space, a path, something as simple as just a pathway between an existing subdivision and a proposed subdivision could potentially provide that, that separation, that buffer, that transition necessary.
Thank you, Caleb. Madam Mayor, follow-up. In my opinion, I, I just, I, I, I think that that's not, in my opinion, I believe that that type of a transition isn't enough where you have larger, you know, five-to-10-acre lots, and just across the pathway or across the street, you have up to, you know, three units per, per acre. I think that that would need to be, in my opinion, any abutting of these larger estate lots would need to be a little bit less dense than that.
Madam Mayor?
Caleb, not looking for a, a verbatim response, but maybe a summary. My assumption is that this proposal was brought before the steering committee, and I'm just curious if you could kind of summarize why this designation wasn't supported or recommended by the steering committee? What was their basis for that?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I, I think I, I mentioned it last time, and I may, and I may have under-characterized the conversation. There were some members of our steering committee that were talking for and advocating for a lower-density residential designation. Um, that didn't, again, rise to the level of developing one, though, to propose, because the majority of the steering committee didn't believe that was in the best interest of an urbanizing community to have this designation, again, that plans for rural or planning for a city. We're not planning for a rural. So what you see, though, on the screen, and here's, here's kind of what I think happened, quite frankly, is there's, there was a pre-app going on next to a subdivision, and it opened the eyes of that subdivision, saying, "Oh, we're looking at medium-density coming in next to us. What's going on?" And this just happened to correspond with the time that we're developing the comp plan. So the, but that, but the steering committee already finished meeting. So again, some of what you see is a response to more recent requests to accommodate some of the existing low-density residential properties on the map, recognizing their, their rural character. But someday, again, they're still in our area of impact, and someday will still be part of the city, maybe even as is, as a five-acre lot, but still within the city or surrounded by it. So the timing, I guess, to answer your question, was, was really at play here, that there wasn't this ground swell from the public while we were really developing a majority of the plan to make the changes you see on the screen or to keep or amend the rural estate designation we currently have.
I have an additional question. Caleb, and again, my belief would be, if this designation was adopted, and the city of Meridian comes knocking at this rural area, and owners want to move somewhere else, redevelop their property, they would just go through the same semi-annual comp plan, uh, excuse me, map amendment process that we've kind of contemplated that this plan would allow? Is that, is that accurate?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I'm not quite tracking your, your question there.
So, Madam Mayor, sorry, apologize to you, Caleb. I, I guess for me, what I, what I'm trying to wrap my head around is, this is a visioning document. So six years from now, um, everybody and their dog is wanting to move to northeast Meridian, and development comes to the edge of where one of these designations is. And the owners want to leave, they want to sell the land, they want to redevelop their land, whatever they want to do. What is the process that's afforded to them to change the designation at that point?
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, so, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, members of the council, everybody in, in the city or in the county has at their disposal, uh, the opportunity to apply for a comprehensive plan map amendment. Um, as late as today, I told somebody, "That is at your disposal." However, we're going to scrutinize the heck out of those in the next, not that we don't take them seriously off the bat, but because we're spending so much effort in developing this, anything that comes is submitted in the next 18 months to two years or so, good luck. But that is always at the disposal of a, a member to change the map, and it's not semi-annually today. We may talk about that in the future. How often do we even want to, um, consider taking in those map? We used to have a cutoff and only do it every six months. We, we got rid of that, but that's another. I guess, I think the heart of your question, though, more is, what, what we get some criticism for sometimes is holding properties with a designation with the understanding that someday we're going to give it a higher-density designation. Public works? That doesn't work. There are master planning today. We can't, we can't put on our future land use map rural and expect there to be sewer and water someday, because guess what? The sizing of that is happening right now. So you can't in five years, or whatever your scenario is, when everyone wants to sell and redevelop, and now I want eight acre, eight dwelling units per acre. It's too late. We can't do it then. So this plan really does need to reflect an ultimate, and it's not perfect, and it does change, and it can change, but we can't look at it that way of, "Well, we'll get this holding designation of rural, and then someday we'll come back and we'll make it medium or medium-high or something else." If that's what we're going to do, we need to disclose that and start planning for it.
Any other questions on, on this particular item? And we will always go back, so, okay.
Moving right along. That, that is probably the biggest one, though, quite frankly. I mean, that's, that's, that's going to be a big one for you all to... And I look forward to listening to the discussion. All right. Sample zoning was something else that, that came up, and this is something that has arisen for, well, probably since as long as I've been with the city. Um, there is a disconnect between future land use designations and zoning. You hear them used interchangeably. We're not zoning anybody when we give you a future land use designation. So that's what we've tried to do with this matrix, and even the title slide that we've been using at public hearings for the past year, year and a half, is trying to educate the public that says, it's largely what you see on the screen, this matrix, um, it's a little bit different exhibit, but it's the same point. If you have this designation, here's zones that you're most likely to see with that designation. So that's the matrix you, you see on the left. We put, we also put on, we call our cut sheets, which is essentially a summary of what, you know, what does mixed-use community mean? It's easier for us if we can just say, "Here's a paper that tells you what mixed-use community means." It's not intuitive to understand what that means. But within that MUC designation, we put sample zoning. We say, "You can ask for an R8 or an R15s. We're looking for higher-density residential. We're looking for, um, smaller-scale commercial and office." So on a cut sheet, though, but we've, but that isn't in our comp plan anywhere, so it's like, "Well, it doesn't say that in your comp plan. How can you write on a cut sheet that supposedly summarizes what your comp plan says if you don't put sample zoning in there?" Like, "Okay, well, we should probably include sample zoning then in our comp plan that really does make that tie between a designation and zoning." Big caveat there, though, is, again, with a low-density designation, for example, R8 or I would even make the argument, R15 could be appropriate in limited instances. Let's take that example of we have four-and-a-half-acre, five-acre lots next to a, a project, and they, and those neighbors really want to park next to them. That's what they think is an appropriate transition. You want that density on the other side. Well, let's take half of the 10 acres that's being developed, and we'll make half of it a park, but I need smaller lots over here. So guess what? Overall, I'm at two dwelling units per acre. It's 15 over here, it's zero over here. Overall, though, the average is, so I'm, I'm using the R15 zoning. I'm still below the overall density for that designation, but it allows you to design things differently, right? If we say, "You can only do R2 and R..." If we say, you can only do R2 and R4 in a low-density residential, you're constrained, because the developer's going to want to generally try to get higher densities. And again, you've got to take, in the context, what you're developing against. But again, this is just meant to say, nine times out of 10, in a low-density residential, you're likely to see R2 or R4. Doesn't mean somebody couldn't ask for a little bit of R8 in there. If it's designed appropriately, and it still transitions and all that, and the density is still less than three, three or less, that may, that may work. Zoning is, is, and I'm getting onto my next slider a little bit. The medium-density zoning designation is dimensional standards. A comp plan designation is about density. Zoning is not density, and density is not zoning. But there is this interplay between the two. It's, it's different, and that's what we've tried to, we've tried to explain that through different graphics and in the text, and we thought that it would be a good idea to include sample zoning. That second bullet, I, I think, already touched, too. So we, as staff, tend to like the idea of including sample zoning within the text. We think it is a little more transparent, if you will, but it could also be misleading. Because it's not just R2 or R4. But if developers proposed R8, they're probably going to get, people are going to testify, hey, your, your plan says sample zoning's R2 and R4. Why are they asking for R8? So at the end of the day, for that reason, and because this was a later add in the process, so this, this came up at testimony last week. We did the research on when this was actually proposed and reviewed by the steering committee. It was brought up in our third-to-last meeting. So they only looked at this text, their second-to-last meeting, which was effectively the last working meeting. Our last meeting was a thank-you dinner and kind of how did we do type of a meeting. So we didn't really get into any of the details of the text or the map. So really, there was only one, the last working meeting of the steering committee where they reviewed including sample zoning. So, because the process was abbreviated, I don't want to say flawed, it was out there, it went to the public, but the steering committee, and again, it's sort of, we think it's an improvement, but there's pros and cons. At this point, we'd say, let's just take sample zoning out, and we'll continue to try to do the best we can by educating the public, developers, and others on how land use designations and zoning, one guides the other, and it doesn't dictate the other.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Porter.
I think to that point, and your, your previous slide kind of had an example of that. And one of the reasons I like a more robust definition describing the purpose and intent of the density associated with the land use is it provides the guidance more accurate to what is intended for that area, much more so than a sample zoning. And to your point, for example, in a low-density designated area, you might want to, by eliminating the sample zoning, you might want to encourage somebody to have a dimensional standard that necessitates the R15, still match the intent of a low-density residential through some creative land use, which kind of hits back to one of the previous concepts of the overarching kind of promotion and protection of private property rights, and trying to encourage people to get best use of their property, and, and be afforded that flexibility, but not be surprised by what the ultimate intent of the city is for that area. So, I thought it, it made sense with your explanation that the sample zoning can be removed, because I think it is more of a hindrance than, even with good intentions, than what it might ultimately provide, so long as the sample zoning removal is replaced with a more robust definition of the density intention for that particular area. And that provides the flexibility to the property owner, to the potential developer, and it provides better guidance for adjacent property owners and to the elected officials to understand that discretionary role when, if and when that property and that project comes to us. And we're not thinking R2, R4 dimensional standards handcuff this 20-acre project, which could, with flexibility, be something even greater. So, I thought the sample zoning coming out with a more robust definition meets that intent.
Madam Mayor, again, that's kind of where we landed, too, but now to play devil's advocate or throw another option in there a little bit. And, and the, the last slide there, I think, is, there, there is a typo, again, because this was a later add, and it's, it's my fault, I should have read it, because I knew it was a later add. But in the medium-density residential, the sample zoning, if we want to leave sample zoning, we need to at least correct that one, because right now it says R2 and R4, and that's just not accurate. So if, if we want to go there, and this is where, we don't need to go there now, because if everyone is of a similar mind that we don't want to include sample zoning, then we'll just remove sample zoning on the four or five residential, five residential designations. If we do, then let's have that conversation about what sample zonings we list. And, I would say, we've added, Brian and I have wordsmith, and I can get into it again if we want to go there, a sentence we would add that goes right before these designations that say, "Sample zoning is just that, it's sample. It's not an exhaustive list, you can ask for other ones, so long as you meet the intent of the, the definition of that area." Right? So again, that, that, so that's what we would add and clean up the sample zones listed, and add that if we think there's value to have sample zoning. I don't want to spend too much time on that if the solution is just remove sample zoning, but if you guys want to go there, we have, we have that solution, too, which, again, we think is a viable option. They're both, this is where you're going to make the call. We, we can, we see pros and cons to both of them, and we'll work with either one of them. We see value to both.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
I, I kind of like the sample zoning, Caleb. And I wrote, you know, like, to, just include something kind of like what you said, that the overall density must comply with the, with the designation. You know, if you put that in there clearly, and then even more in-depth, like what you were saying, you know, there are other ways and multiple ways to get there. But the, the bottom line is that the overall density has to comply with the designation. And I, I like, I like the visual. I think it's, it can be helpful, and it could maybe help people get creative.
Madam Mayor, because Councilwoman Mylan went there, I'm just going to, I'm going to pull it up to show what that could look like here, then. So again, under the general guidance, and this would be just before we listed in the text of the, the different residential density designations, this is the text we would propose you add if you're going to keep in sample zoning.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
They've got to go. Because the more I think about it, the more I keep trying to put myself in the position of the hundreds of people that have been before us in the audience, and I'm like, oh my gosh. This, unless you live in this, there's just, it's just, no. It's got to go. At first, when the discussion started, I was like, oh, but no, yeah, it's got to go. I've completely changed the last 10 minutes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
I tend to agree. I think, though, Councilmember Borton gave clear direction. The sample zoning is well-intended, but creates many more complications than it benefits it provides. So whether it is a more robust definition or a, a better mousetrap to educate the public, I'm supportive of that, but I think it makes clear sense to me about pulling the, the sample zoning piece out. Doesn't, I don't think it serves us long-term.
Okay. If there's no comments or further questions, we'll go ahead and move to the next item.
So this one should be pretty quick. This is also just a confirmation on the text of the plan. So there were two changes that were recommended by our consultant early on in the process, and that was to change the density ranges described. So we're in the same section of text in the, in the plan, chapter three. The medium-high-density residential currently in the adopted plan, that range is eight to 15 dwelling units per acre. The consultant recommends eight to 12 is appropriate for our community, and therefore, there's a trickle-down then to the high-density, then anything be, then above 12 then would be the new range, where before, or currently, it's 15. So, again, process-wise, that was included in the first drafts seen by the steering committee. It's remained consistent throughout the public review and comment period. It wasn't discussed ad nauseam by the steering committee, but it was part of what they reviewed and approved and went through the process. So, this was just another thing that, that I wanted to just circle back on is, through the public hearing that came up, and we've talked about it, and we're good either way, again, at this point, because it's been vetted through the public and the steering committee this way, 12 certainly works. So, I don't know if you have any comments on that one, but I wanted to just look that out. So, those are kind of the text. Madam Mayor, did you have? Those are, those are kind of the text changes, and then text to map. There's, there's sort of a bleeding here of, right, whatever you're going to do with items one and two could have implications on some of the next things we're going to talk about. But that's sort of the text changes. And again, these, those are all in chapter three of the plan, which is the land use section of the plan. I'm going to then summarize, tee up, frame, whatever, kind of, again, what we heard regarding some of the requested map changes a little bit. Rustler Place, I don't know that there's a whole lot here to summarize. You're all familiar with the area. This is more just a graphic to refresh your memory, that in the adopted future land use map, they're designated as medium. We'd propose to use the low-density residential for Rustler Place and Rock, Rock Ranch Estates, and then a couple of parcels that weren't in those subdivisions, but do exist in that general vicinity. So, again, I pause or just keep going, and not that you have to make that decision, but I wanted to just put that out there as one of the requests, right, to a, an ultra-low or a low, maybe not just for this property even, but maybe other properties in South Meridian, or North Meridian, or other places in our area of impact, if you have that designation.
Any comments from council on that?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Porter.
You might have lost me a little bit when you, you referenced ultra-low, that's...
Again, going back to, to number one, if, if there is a, a design, a new designation or repurposing of the existing rural estate designation, where to use that on the map? They're the first ones to say, use us as an ultra-low, or uber-low, or rural, or whatever that designation is going to be, and say, there may be other opportunities. If, if, in fact, we do create that, if that's the direction you want to go, there may be other places that that gets used as well. But they're the ones that were most vocal from the last meeting, saying, we, we aren't going to be medium, certainly. Low is even pushing it. We, we, the vision should be ultra-low for us, so, sorry, that was confusing.
Madam Mayor, I think this all obviously blends together. I think some of the answers to the earlier comments about if, if sample zoning is removed and replaced with a more robust definition of low-density residential, that more robust definition, which has some of the features you showed and addresses, you know, the one-acre lot size adjacent to rural-type development, then makes this designation on the right from the P&amp;Z Commission, the low-density residential, to be, I guess, as amended, it's a little more low-density than it was defined a week ago. It's not as low as the old rural, which is being removed. So it all seems to capture the compromise, or, or a compromise middle ground for us to consider. We heard some public comment that talked about, and I forget the gentleman's name, one in particular referenced, you know, the one-acre lot as being kind of a benchmark transition for some of these county ag property owners. So, I think they all tie together. So assuming you remove the, the sample zoning, and assuming you define low-density the way you've amended it, and it might be clarified even more so, then the map designation on the right now seems more appropriate and of less concern. I think it all ties together. And, and Madam Mayor, to that point, I think what, what isn't, I think maybe for today's discussion, but if we're utilizing the robust definition, for lack of a better phrase, as the new tool to help guide low-density residential land uses and affording flexibility within that by removing the sample zoning. And I think the medium-density residential, when I look at the draft on 3-10, it's, it's a couple of sentences, right? Because it had the sample zoning to try and help frame the uses. So I think if we're going to remove the sample zoning, the medium-density residential might need a little more meat to it as well, to be valuable to the, to everybody, really. And I just think, and, and the old plan has it, a couple of sentences, because I think that sample zoning is... I mean, well, not on this one, but it's short. Sample zoning can be a crutch that more, more text language can help. Did any of that make sense?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, I, I think it made sense. I think the thing that concerns me the most, or, or again, devil's in the deep, a little more meat in the definition of medium-density. We have, that is our most-used land use designation. We have, I don't remember the percentage, but probably 40% of our future land use map is medium, roughly. There are just a lot of variables, and so to put more meat on something that is north to south, east to west, infill to suburban, and still with defining everything within that, I don't know what the expectation is there to add more meat to something, realizing that it's got to do everything to transition to low, and it's going to be next to commercial and industrial and everything else. I don't know how to, almost kind of want to keep it pretty simple, density range, single-family homes. That's it, right? Like, pretty much limited to, but I don't know what you're envisioning there, with more meat.
It may be so. That may be the answer. I don't, I obviously don't have language for it right now, but here's the, the, goes back to the intent of this comp plan. What the whole thing is trying to do is provide that, that kind of common understanding of what the intended land use types are for an area. So if you ever had a situation where someone's brought an application, and, and they suggested medium-density residential, and you ever, or planning ever provided some comments back that said, that medium-density residential really shouldn't be here, and they say, why is that? And you would say, well, medium-density residential is generally intended to do X, Y, and Z. I'm trying to get to the X, Y, and Z, just something, and maybe, maybe there's nothing you can do, but maybe something that, by robust definition, so a property owner and an applicant doesn't, you know, learn of it late in the game. They kind of know. And if there's not more language, I get it. I, I totally understand what you're saying. I just think it's so great to not have surprises, and if we can utilize, kind of like what you did to low-density. I don't know how you do it, but that's all I was trying to promote.
So, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate that thought. I guess my, my initial response would be, and again, they don't all apply, but we have 500 policies, and, and at least a dozen or so of those are going to apply to that scenario that really limits those surprises down the road, and it directs. But they're going to apply on a case-by-case. Not all 500 are going to apply to any one property. And let's, so let's not get too focused on the color on a map, but really, it's a combination of things so that we avoid surprises. What is your color on the map first? What zoning should, is appropriate there because of what's going on around you? What's your design? And then look at some of those policies that say, you know, this is what staff is expecting, and probably what the neighborhood's expecting, too, is, again, transition, open space, some of those other things. So, I'm not saying we can't maybe add some things in there, but we've got to look at, look at all of this in, it's a package deal in the plan, right? There's, there's multiple policies that apply, so, sorry.
Okay, anything further on this?
For now, okay. And then Magic Bridge, again, I, I think probably everyone remembers this one, but just a quick refresher. The steering committee went back and forth on this one. Their final recommendation, though, was to leave the existing Locust View Heights properties with the low-density residential designation. So what you see on the adopted side, Locust View Heights, leave that low-density residential. This is the one I mentioned when asked the question, what did staff recommend changing from the steering committee? This is one where we... From the steering committee. This is one where we pulled the trump card or said, you know what, we think this is in the best interest to do something. More like what you see on the right-hand side and the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, agreed. So that is their, their recommendation to you. I would just. You don't have it on here, but, um, the steering committee's recommendation isn't the adopted. The steering committee's recommendation actually still did change. The properties, uh, in Magic View subdivision to the mixed-use neighborhood. So irregardless of what you decide. Kind of in, in this general vicinity, the office has not developed as office very well. You do have the frontage lots along the freeway that have. Um, this mixed-use neighborhood designation also accommodates the office, but some of these ones that don't have great access, that are back hidden in there. Just aren't great office lots. And so, again, kind of irregardless of what you decide on. The Locust View Heights side, staff would recommend that you, you go with, because that's been pretty consistent when we haven't had anybody say, don't. Don't change the, that area from office and commercial to more mixed-use, um, neighborhood type of uses, so. Want to kind of point that out there.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Caleb, did, did you guys make this change then after the last steering committee meeting, but before it went to P and Z?
Correct. Yeah, this is again, this is the one, well, with Elgato, I guess there's a small tweak on Elgato to. Transition with a little bit of office, but we largely left the steering committee's recommendation alone, but for this one.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. Did you guys give the steering committee notice, hey, we're making this change before you brought it to P and Z?
Sure. I will just point, point out, just, it wasn't just me and Brian in a dark, smoky room making these decisions.
What?
It was, it was a larger city staff getting together and saying, here's what's going forward, Public Works and. And, you know, other departments and other planning staff too. So we did, we did vet that out further and just said, you know what? We just don't think the steering committee really got this one right. We really think there's long-term negative implications for our organization if you don't, and that's why. We did that. The other ones. Again, we, we may have disagreed with other ones, but this one, we really thought, ah, this just, but. I just wanted to point that out. It wasn't just more brain power than. We have to, to do that. And certainly we, yeah, I don't feel that I'm high and mighty that way and just change the recommendation of 22 other folks and say, yeah, we know what's best.
So Caleb, last week, um, this place in the red up against Locust Grove. There were two residents that testified they're not part of. Subdivision, that that is separate. So did the steering committee talk about that?
So Madam Mayor, it did come up. I mean, we didn't, we didn't get into that, those details because that really didn't matter to our decision. We're really looking at the area redeveloping, not who's in an HOA or different. Subdivisions and all that. We're just, we're looking at the area. Certainly, we looked at the lot sizes and, and what was developed on them, and there's some. General consistencies with, you know, again, similar lot sizes even on those lots on the front, basically being around the one acre lots. So it was disclosed and we knew that, but it didn't really factor in into any decisions.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
Caleb, it's me again.
I'm glad you, uh, referenced that. We wondered who you were.
Got a question for, Caleb, can you walk me through how you, um, got to the point where you changed the, the commercial designation? On Magic Bridge? You know, the pro, why and how, but like, the process that you went through?
As a lot?
Madam Mayor, uh, Councilman, uh, Burton, so the, the concept you see there on the right is one of the original concepts or similar to one of the original concepts that the consultants proposed. I, I don't know why the red there particularly was pulled out. You can do the red in the, in the brown typically. Not something super high-intense and mixed-use neighborhood, but mixed-use neighborhood does allow commercial uses, so. I, I can't speak to why that is there unless they were trying to encourage something even higher intense of what you would do in mixed-use neighborhood up against Locust Grove, but.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. So Brian, what you're saying is the, uh, the, uh, the folks that we contracted out to, Logan Simpson made that change?
This is one of their concepts, yes.
That they, they, they thought would be more beneficial?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions on this one?
Sorry, there's so many, um. Long title here. Uh, this is the, the, the general area of, um, Black Cat, Pine Avenue, Elgato. Uh, the railroad tracks. Again, I don't think this one needs a whole lot of explanation or reminder. Um, but the steering committee had basically requested that. All of this area go to industrial. And the Planning and Zoning Commission requested that be scaled back. You heard testimony that maybe. Well, everything from maybe just this area is appropriate to industrial to maybe nothing north of the railroad tracks being, um, designated industrial. So you really do have. Some options, everything from a do-nothing to going back to what the original steering committee said and, and really looking at our industrial lands that we don't have a whole lot. And maybe the, it's, it's more appropriate to designate more. So this one, again, staff is. We've played our role in this, just, just kind of refreshing, uh, where things lie and, and the recommendation you've gotten from P and Z and some of the testimony you heard last week.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
I've been somewhat reluctant to, to chime in about what I think different designations should be, but. On, on this one, I, I do think the. There was a suggestion by somebody in the public to use, and I, I can't remember the name of the. Lateral or whatnot.
Purdom.
Yeah, thank you. To, yeah, that's true. Thank you, Councilmember Mylan, to maybe use that as a, a border to separate the, uh, industrial from the. Low-density residential or whatever it may be designated with. I think that, that seemed to make sense to me. I don't know how, again, I don't like making changes because of an opinion of one, but. Because we're kind of going through this process, that was at least one that I felt really comfortable with, at least suggesting. Um, that we, we look at making that change. And Caleb, I may jump to kind of where all probably head in the end is that I hope. You can all provide some feedback either back to the steering committee or, or to staff tonight. And this would be one of those that I would suggest that the steering committee perhaps take another look at.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
I kind of get whatever comes of this. If staff's gonna make. Changes following tonight's remarks and it might come back to us, which it, it may be a leak. I'm not sure about the, the steering committee. I mean, if they've done all the work that they went through and they made a recommendation based upon their reasoning and. If it goes back to them, I would probably, if I was on the committee, I'd say, well. Make it all gray. I told you, I did the work. So what do you want me to do as a steering committee to provide answers to the council that you don't already have?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Great, great question, Councilmember Burton. And for me, it is, it's addressing some of these bigger questions that have come before us tonight that maybe. The steering committee did or didn't have the chance to wrestle with. So, um. Going back to, just, we've taken the public testimony, council has weighed in on issues like the ultra-low density or whatever that piece is. That's something that because I've been supportive of this being a citizen-led initiative, not city council-led initiative, I would want to. At least give them the chance to weigh in and respond, good, bad, or indifferent on that. Your, your comments specifically, Councilmember Burton, about, um, removing the, the sample zoning and providing greater. Uh, clarification or greater information in the definitions. That's something I would also like them to, to weigh in on. Um, if we take out the sample zoning. What is the, the better mechanism that exists to educate both the development community and our citizens as to. What the flume means versus what zoning could be. We, we can make recommendations and we, if we want to, just say, this is what we want it to be. From a, from a process standpoint, I almost want them to have the opportunity to. Have their hands on it one more time and say, whoa, whoa, whoa. We talked about this six months ago and we didn't want to do that, and here's the reason why. So that, that, there's some of these things that I think is worth ha, giving them the opportunity to, to chime in on that.
So you're recommending going all the way back and then bringing it through planning and zoning again and, and then city council, because that would be the process.
Mad, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm not making any recommendation at this point. It was more. I'm, I'm speaking off the cuff based on some of these types of things. I. I think from a process standpoint, we have chartered the steering committee to do so much of the work. And there are some bigger changes that are, that are, that we're contemplating tonight. And I. I, I value the expertise of the committee, and so I would want them to have that opportunity. And if, I guess I would seek legal's direction if it has to go. To the steering committee and then back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for concurrence. That's a good piece of information. I'd like to know, I didn't think that was required, but if it is. That's, I think, another factor for us to consider based on any recommendations that we would make at the end of tonight's meeting or in the future.
Well, and that's a process question that we can get to as well, if it, if it gets to that point.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
That's a great point. And, and process-wise. Think we provide direction tonight and it comes back and in, in its new revised format to us. We take a look at it and it can, at that point, be acted on. I, I think it can go to the steering committee and come back because it's still with us, or we could choose to remand it. I think we might be able to control those choices if we get there, but we couldn't do it tonight because we gotta see what the final thing looks like anyway.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
Just a quick question. Maybe, maybe remand it back to the, um, P and Z Commission might be a better choice, maybe to offer up some public testimony. I don't know if. There can be some public testimony at a steering committee level. So that would be my only, uh, thought.
Next item.
So then the next one are ones that, uh, were either late requests, so requests that you saw last week or since last week. Or that went through the steering committee and the steering committee didn't recommend them, but you've still seen letters or other testimony requesting those changes. So. I'm happy to run through these with you, but again, they hadn't, they haven't gone through that process. I think. Just maybe by looking at them, you'll recall Franklin Road, East of Eagle, there's really two requests in there. Uh, one is to change that area from, um, mixed-use to industrial and let some of that area that ACHD owns go to Boise. Since it's split between our area of city impact. So that's the one request there. A Gem Tone request, which is off of Pine Hickory Rosario. We've gotten some additional public testimony from them. So again, this is north of Pine. South of Fairview, um, basically straddling Hickory on both sides. Uh, their request was to go to. Mixed-use non-residential and, um, there's quite a bit of residential going on just to their west. So, and, and it's my understanding too that their CCNRs or BO, Business Owners Group or whatever prohibits residential anyway, so it really doesn't matter what we do if they. You can't get through them anyway. Northeast corner of Locust Grove and McMillan. Again, you had public testimony last week. There's that neighborhood commercial area just north of the Maverick there that was requested. Again, I can jump to any or all of them if you want. Then southwest corner of Amity, Meridian, you also had a, a letter, um, requesting that designation be changed from medium-density residential. To either commercial or mixed-use, um, community. And that's, uh, basically Kitty Corner from. Victory Greens, uh, the, the feed store there, um, that area. And then, uh, northwest corner of Eustick and McDermott, we got a letter yesterday? Yeah, yesterday, requesting a change. And this is, if you recall, uh, when the high school was going in, Oyhe High School. Uh, Hunter Homes has the, the, I believe it's 40 acres adjacent. They're requesting to change their current designation of mixed-use interchange. To commercial or, or, excuse me, mixed-use residential. Um, so again. Those are all on the table, if you will, but for various reasons, again, weren't, weren't part of the. Uh, the packages and going through the details there. But again, we have a link and I can. Show you all those if you, if you want. So those are also kind of on the table, um, so to speak, or requests you have before you. Um, I will just note, I didn't check before this meeting. Some other ones may have rolled in here, 11th hour, that I don't know about. So again, disclaimer. There may be other ones that we missed. I certainly know there's some other comments that I haven't addressed in this presentation, so please look at the record and read the letters. Um, this wasn't meant to s- supersede or, or in lieu of reading public testimony, cover those things. These are just the higher-level. Um, requests and potential changes that, that we're aware of, that we thought you should address this evening. So. Um, just in conclusion then, this is a refresher as well, and this kind of goes to the point that was just made. We don't have that final document. There are gonna be some changes. Even if you didn't make any of the changes we just talked about, there's some things that staff has, and so we need to kind of clean it up, dress it up in resolution form. Put it in the dra, you know, the, the, pretty it up, get it to you. It's not gonna change anything. Um, in context, but it'll make it print quality, user-friendly type of, of things. And then any other changes as well. So we would need some time to. To address those changes, but just as a, as a refresher. You could make the action to adopt it, but we'd still bring that back to you for approval of the resolution to make sure it's what you're, what you, you wanted it to, how you wanted it to look and, and read. Um, so again, and this is a repeat of the slide, but just, we, we stand at the ready to implement the plan. Without adoption of the plan, we're gonna keep working the existing plan. And I, I think I would just say, and I'm not, hopefully this isn't over the top with this, but the longer we wait to adopt the plan, the longer we have to wait to implement the plan. And there's some things in the draft plan that I think the community wants us to adopt. Even before the plan. And so I, I would just, again, y- you have some things to weigh here, but just remember that, that we stand at the ready to go on this thing. But we can't until we actually have it. So if you want to send it back to the steering committee, yes, we will do that. You want to send it back to P and Z, yes, we'll do that. Won't see real changes in our community. It's gonna be business as usual until we get this adopted. So. Um, largely business as usual. I should, no, things are changing, but we can't implement this until it's adopted. So. I think that's, that's probably, and, and then just kind of in that same vein, um, and this is really, the, the, I think some of the closing remarks last time was. You know, there is a recognition, we have a new mayor that's been elected and three new council members. And the conversation about should we wait and have them be there to adopt? And that's, to me, that's separate than even the conversation you just had a minute ago. That in and of itself, I don't necessarily think that that's a reason to wait. And I'll tell you why, because we've spoken to staff to those folks that are coming in and, and I'm not putting words in their mouth, but. Um, I think they're excited about the new plan, generally speaking. I'm not gonna say they're all a hundred percent in favor of every word that's in there because I hadn't asked that question. But they're excited to implement a new plan for our community. And I can say that, and I do know that. Two of them have been actively involved in this, one being a Planning and Zoning Commissioner that recommended approval and voted to recommend approval to you of the plan. Another one that sat on the steering committee. So. And just things to consider. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to pressure you into adopting it, but just to, to. Refresh your memory that has been vetted through that process and even the, the new elected officials that are coming on board, we think are largely up to speed on, on what's included. So. With that, we kind of went through it, but I'll, I'll be here to be your, I don't know, Vanna White or whatever, but we'll go back to different areas, different slides. Brian and I will try to answer questions, but that's, we framed it up for the rest of the discussion tonight.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
I have a, one, one more question for Vanna. In regard to, uh, there was, there was, I was just looking through my notes and I, there was, uh. I just had one question in regard to a flume request, and it was, um. Some land in between Lake Hazel and Columbia. That was low-density and got moved to medium-density. Wanted to know. What the process was with that. There, you, I, I, I don't know if that's too broad. I, the, the, the homeowner wasn't specific.
Yeah.
That's all it was told to me.
Madam Mayor, um, Councilman Burton, can you? That doesn't, request doesn't even sound familiar. I heard between Lake Hazel and Columbia. What were the east-west streets? What were the general vicinity we were?
I was told Lake Hazel and Columbia.
That's a big area.
Yeah, it's too vague, unless you know what I'm talking about. That's all.
That request does not sound familiar to me. I don't remember reading anything or talking to anybody. I could be wrong. We've talked to hundreds of people for the last 18 months, but without more details, I'm not quite sure what request that might be.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton.
Ms. Brian.
We did have a lot of requests, and I don't know which specific one that was as well, but I can speak to, generally speaking, there were some changes around the park. A request had come in for that to go from low to medium. Public Works reviewed that, said we could service it, the area shown as medium, and the Steering Committee did buy off on that. There were some requests that they didn't say yes to. I don't know if there was others that they said no to, but the area around the Discovery Park had a little bit of a change there from low to medium. I don't know if that helps at all or not.
I will just toggle, and you can kind of see the changes from adopted. So this is, again, what's on the books now. You can see some more low around Discovery Park, some mixed-use kind of along the frontage, and then draft. So again, some of that low to medium, and that mixed-use to a medium. And I don't know if that's right area. And again, I can do this. We can toggle back and forth, go between adopted and draft, if you'd like.
Madam Mayor, one last question. Were there any requests or changes to the flume that were made after the Steering Committee's recommendation to planning and zoning that weren't discussed but were changed? And if so, why?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, again, it's the, there's ones we mentioned before, so it's the one
Those ones that we talked about.
Yeah, it's the one, so it's the Rustler Lane one.
Right.
That came in afterwards.
Right.
And staff thought, oh yeah, that makes sense, because it can't develop as anything else. There was the Magic Bridge area.
Right.
And then, what was the other one?
Gatto.
Oh, Gatto Lane. We made a small change there with some office. That did not get forwarded on to you. What got forwarded on to you was
Low density.
The much scaled-back version that's in the staff report.
With the low density or minus the office?
Those are the only changes I'm aware of, so those are the only changes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylon.
Caleb, we also had many questions. I know it was on your last slide about open space and amenities and all that, but asking us to make the UDC amendments to coincide with the adoption of the comp plan, as opposed to it taking months and months afterwards to finally implement. I've been asking for years, so I'm kind of on that bandwagon myself.
I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, is that, is that something that you guys have talked about or considered, or you're just kind of putting it off until after this is done?
Typically, in the past, and I can only talk about the past, the comp plan has to be adopted, and then you align your codes to coincide with it, to support it. Certainly after the adoption, you can prioritize those areas that you want to see, maybe an interim code until, because I think staff has been very forthcoming in saying, we want to put together a working group and really dive into the open space thing. That will take time. So you're not going to have a fully informed policy on that, but if there are some changes that this council wants to do as they consider adopting the plan to have brought back as an interim, certainly that's your purview as well.
Madam Mayor, that was a fine explanation. I guess I do want to respond, though, because this is something that has lingered for many, many months. And I'm not going to, please don't hear this as me making excuses, because this is a known thing we need to address. It's largely what the mayor said. It's best practice to have the comp plan that guides then what you're changing your standards to. That will certainly help us say, we need to raise the bar, because we have these policies that say, raise the bar. We know, though, that the bar needs to be raised, even absent that plan. The reality is, is the time, it's the time. I don't have time to manage 19 different projects. I need to put some of these to bed so I can open up new ones. I can't do shared vehicle, and again, I'm not trying to make excuses, but it is resources and bandwidth. I can't start new projects, and we're short-staffed. And again, please don't hear that as an excuse, but it's the reality of it. I don't have the manpower to take on it. This is a major activity. I don't want to say we haven't done anything with open space and amenities. We're still talking about and playing with and toying with, when it's time, when we get that group together, let's hit the ground running. Let's come up with some potential solutions. But we can't officially kick that off for those reasons right now, because I just can't throw another ball in the air and try to keep them all in the air.
Right.
So, but this is hugely important. I totally agree. We want to address it, too. And we will.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you for that response, Caleb. And I like the idea of interim plan to, so that we don't have to, so that you don't have to wait and put that pressure on the working group and all of that you're doing, so you can make sure that you get it right, without trying to just hurry through and get it done. Anybody else okay with that?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Part of that process will be the staff being the applicant with the UDC text amendment to then get published and go to P&amp;Z, and then, I mean, the gunk of process also is going to make it not instant to adopt UDC text concurrently with the comp plan. So I think that probably speaks more to why the comp plan, I'd love to move on this thing. With your question on, not tonight necessarily, but to your comment of, we need to clean it up and bring it back, is that a one-week, two-week type process for you? How quick is?
So Madam Mayor, if I can just understand, Councilman Burton, your question, clean up, what, the open space and amenities or the comp plan?
The comp plan.
It depends on the changes, right? I mean, it depends on what, if the direction tonight is to go create a new rural designation, then that's going to be more than a week or two. It is probably more the process that you guys talked about. Let's get some type of a committee, Steering Committee, whatever, or remand it back to P&amp;Z, or whatever. Unless you're simply going to take the existing rural designation we have and continue to use that, that's a bigger lift. If it's tweak a little bit of the text and change this map and change that map, we can do that in a couple weeks. I didn't mean to say, to have this looming as, you know, adopt this, or else we're not going to do any other work. It's not a threat. We're not trying to
Madam Mayor, sorry.
Mr. Cavanagh.
But Caleb, I don't think that you're creating doom and gloom and trying to scare us. I think you're providing a very accurate picture of what is going on within your department right now, as the city continues to grow. I guess, as we kind of discuss this, the other part that I guess I maybe want to plant a seed for Madam Mayor and your team, is I think we benefited from Logan Simpson and their expertise in helping a lot of this process. Is there some of these other things that Councilmember Mylon's talking about that we could rely on another subject matter expert to relieve some of that burden? Because I'll tell you, from a budget amendment standpoint, with all the challenges you guys have going on your department, if we can bring in some external help to relieve this growing list of things that are, you guys are doing a great job of carrying on your shoulders, like, sign me up. I am super supportive of that.
Well, great, because we'll be coming back for a budget amendment. And so that is awesome to hear.
Fantastic.
I'd met UDC.
So Madam Mayor, do you mind if I just expand on that a little bit?
I think you can, yes.
Similar to my comments on open space, that is at the top of the list for us to get a little bit of, staff will be involved, we'll have some bandwidth to be involved, but we are looking to expedite it, and we want, and I don't want to get into all, like shared vehicles, I'm not going to go through the RFP and all that, but at a high level, we're looking for a team of one or two that really can facilitate the dialogue between existing citizens and the development community to raise the bar where no one's happy. Right? We don't, we don't want anybody, but we're meeting in the middle somewhere, and that they can facilitate that discussion and come up with standards that are right for our community. Quite honestly, staff's a little too close to it. And we need a third party that can say objectively, here's what we think is the best for your community when it comes to a package of open space and amenities. So we have, I think what I shared with the mayor was seven or eight different kind of priority projects. And here's where I'm going to kind of walk this line a little bit here, prioritization of policies and projects by new mayor and city council. Sort of. We're ready, once you adopt this, I've got four budget amendments I'm going to put on your desk and say, if you're ready, let's roll on these. Or pick one or two of them, and let's roll on them, and if you want to punt, and we'll look at the rest of them when the new mayor, but I'm, there's four of them that we're going to say, we think these are important, we should do them now, because we got a new plan. That's in the works right now, but I'm not sharing that with you, because I don't have the plan yet, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Just kind of moving along, back to your earlier slides, this one-track might be, I think we can give you direction right now. I mean, we've read all the letters and heard public testimony, again, not voting right now, and reviewed the Steering Committee's work, and P&amp;Z watched all of the discussion there. So I don't know what prevents us from giving you the direction on these items right now, and if it could come back in two weeks, assuming our direction isn't off the rails. In one path, maybe, you could do that and take a look at it, and you can reopen the public hearing as to what we've addressed. Because here's the reality, is you're going to have, the alternative is, if it gets remanded, you're going to be May before you adopt a comp plan. And so if you have it open in a couple, a couple weeks, that's my thought on it. And provide, and have people provide public testimony, and that might change my perspective.
And Mr. Burton, you could, you could, it's still an open public test or public hearing. It was for written testimony. You could open it next week for, to only provide testimony on these new items that are new, and ask for testimony on that, and then, if you're going to contemplate that to close it and make some recommendation, one way or another, if you want to put it back or forward.
In Madam Mayor, even if it gets remanded, as you're describing as another option, let's provide direction. Right now, as we look at these slides, it appears that X is the most reasonable solution in light of all we've reviewed there. Let's adjust it accordingly, and either that adjusted plan gets remanded to the Steering Committee, or it stays with us. But let's go. I don't know why we can't
And I think that staff is really cited. You know, there's a timing element here to get moving on the next steps, and the next steps are going to be the things that are, where the rubber meets the road, and that the next elected officials can weigh in on the priorities.
If the alternative approach is preferred, it's just
Yes, Mr. Burton.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor.
Way in.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think that's what's, that's great about this body. We've got lots of different ways to get to Las Vegas, and we can all kind of take whichever way we think is best. For me, if this was one or two, we're shading something here a little bit different, we're putting a different designation in maybe one other spot, I think that process makes sense. But what we're contemplating is an entire new designation that wasn't incorporated in this map. So if we say, yes, we want that designation, what does that then do to the map? So I don't know if staff can even come back with that recommendation in two weeks. That part concerns me. I think staff have done a remarkable job to follow through on our charter to them to get this done by the end of the year. In my opinion, they've accomplished that, but I don't think that means we need to, you know, wrap this up at the end of the year, unless we've got all of our answers. Councilman Burton, your piece about taking out the sample zoning and asking for something that's beefier, to me, that is a perfect role for that committee to define those definitions. And I think that's also an opportunity to take some of the feedback that we heard from the public about maybe those definitions, including some things we've heard about, like buffers and transitions within that. So that's that meatier piece maybe that you're alluding to. So if staff think they can come back with something for us in two weeks, I'm more than welcome to give them the benefit of the doubt. Just seems very audacious. And to me, is it circumventing the process that we've lined out from the beginning?
Well, I don't know what direction you all are going, and I'm sure staff is sitting there wondering that themselves. But I will say, staff, our staff are the experts. They have been involved in every public outreach, and they have done that agnозium. They know what our public is saying. They are the experts, and they are vetting this, and they're making a recommendation to the elected officials, who have been updated for the last 18 months along the way. These new things, I think it's really Brian and Caleb's, when they could bring back what it would all look like for council to make a decision. Or you can kick the cow down the road and ask for more input from your Planning and Zoning Commission, who are also charged to vet and to make decisions on these. And I think our public, our planning and zoning has done a very good job on that. Or you can put it back to the Steering Committee, who's also been intricately involved. It's going to be the majority of the council that make that decision, but I think that you have the information, we have the experts, and if you're ready to move along so we can do the next steps, or the future mayor and council do the next steps, let's just get this moving.
Madam Mayor.
We can't talk anymore.
I agree. We can just debate this agnозium. Yes, Mr. Palmer.
I just echo Councilman Burton. I think that the, when I first sat down and saw this, I was like, oh no, there's no way this happened. But then I read through it, and it's not that big of a deal. Really, it's just an explanation of what, most of it is just an explanation of why things are what they are recommended, and that makes sense to me. I think a few of the changes that are being recommended since are clearly, they make sense. So let's do it, and if something comes up later that is, oh shoot, fix it. But in the meantime, 500 different policies, a whole flipping map here, let's get the thing approved and then make the little tweaks, rather than delay the entire thing and hold off this whole process and the whole community over a few little hangups. Everybody has a few little hangups. But as a whole, this thing's good. Let's get it done.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I tend to agree with Councilman Burton. I think we have maybe made a few tweaks tonight that can make things a little bit better and clearer. I really like the idea of using, was it the Purdum Drain as the designation on the one area, in general industrial. But I think that we've got a good product. I haven't read all the way through all of the minutes that Caleb sent me from the committee, from the Steering Committee, but I think that throughout the process, the Steering Committee had really good discussion, and I don't think remanding it back would make much of a difference, especially since we decided to take the designations off of the zoning. So I think we've got a really good product that can at least go the next step among this body.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylon.
I just wanted to point out, I guess
I, I just wanted to point out, I guess, some, some things that Caleb brought up earlier on a slide, there's like these five other items that we kind of blew over. I don't want us to do anything without at least addressing those. And the, like, Locust Grove and McMillan is, to me, a no-brainer. Like, this, we're, we're running this guy in circles and there's no win, there's a lose-lose situation unless we adjust that. And, and I think, you know, a couple of these might be really easy fixes. So, I think that we, we really had a good conversation on most of everything else tonight. We kind of went by this real quick and I don't want anything to happen without those being addressed. And I have to go, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor.
I feel like we all have some things that we want to tweak, we want to talk about, some talking points that we want to discuss. For me to say anything more than that would be just talking. And so I'm for, let's, let's have the discussion, let's go. I, I don't see any use of prolonging this, this, this process. I think we should just get on it and start talking about it and hashing it out amongst this body and let's go. Anything beyond that is just me pontificating at this moment. So, let's get, let's get moving. It's my thought.
So, council, I'm recommending to, to take a 15-minute break and collect your thoughts and, and then we'll seek your direction as, as to how best to have the dialogue and make a decision on the direction we want to go.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just to explain why, I probably won't be back after the break. There was mention of finding ways to Vegas. I'm literally getting on a plane in like nine hours to Vegas and I want to go home and pack and go to bed. So it doesn't sound like we're voting on this tonight, but I feel completely comfortable in whatever direction you guys give to them to come back, where I will be here.
Well, if you want, we can wait until you have to leave and have the discussion now. I just thought it would be good to give you guys a few minutes to collect your thoughts and we are seeking direction on...
Madam Mayor. It sounds like what I've heard from the body is, staff come back in two weeks? I mean, do, do you, staff, you looking for direction from all of us about what you want us to bring us back in two weeks? Because if that, I think that's towards where Councilmember Burt was talking about. And if that's the case, and I just don't know if you feel like that you've got direction from us about what you'd want to see in two weeks.
No, we haven't yet.
Oh, I mean, sorry, but to answer that directly, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, particularly on the first one on the screen now, I mean, that one is more than a two-week thing, to me, even without that general direction, if there's a change there. If not, I think, and, and here's how I guess I would propose it, have the conversation, kind of, kind of the Councilman Burt's recommendation. And then we'll look at the whole of the thing and I'll tell you, that, that's a two-week thing, or that's a two-month thing, or a two-year thing. I mean, I don't know what, it's hard for me to tell you when I can give you a deliverable one, I don't know what I'm supposed to be giving you yet. So, maybe work your way through these and go, man, this is a big lift. Or, hey, these are, yeah, these are pretty simple, we can do that in two weeks. I, I just don't know. I don't, I haven't heard that consensus from you all yet, so it's hard to answer.
So Caleb, the recommendation you made, the, the new language, is, what is the time element on that? Maybe that's a good starting talking point.
Madam Mayor, this is staff's recommendation. The other ones we've largely tried to stay neutral on, this is what, we do not propose a rural, rural estate, ultra-low designation. This is our, I'm not going to say it solves the problem as the testimony you heard, but we think this is in the best interest of our community. It's largely the text that was there in low, but we've doubled the words you can see there. I mean, everything in underline is new and we have the new policy. So, this is done. I mean, if, if you all agree with it, it's, I don't, I don't need any time. I take the underline off and we roll it into the text of the plan.
Madam Mayor. For the purposes of the, the second hearing, that's by, in removing the red, the sample zoning from that.
That's easy.
I think that's a good, good language to utilize for our next hearing.
Okay, next item you need clarification on. Sample zoning. I, I think it was clear to remove that.
I heard to remove sample zoning, I don't, I didn't, wasn't counting votes there, but I, I thought I heard more people.
I thought I did.
Take it out for now, at least.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Take it out, but is, do we, take it out and it's gone, or take it out and replace it with something else? That's the piece that I guess I'm confused about.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, and I, I did make some notes when you were talking about this. So I think there is, we need to still do a better job of educating and having people understand that, that, how, how the comp plan designations and zoning work, even if we don't have it in the text of the comp plan. So we'll think on more ways that we can educate people and make it more intuitive. I know it's something Councilman Palmer brought, Palmer brought up even last week about, they don't align and it's confusing. And if you're not a subject matter expert, it is. And it's tough, you're not in the trenches every day, it's a tough one to, when you, when you deal with it once in your lifetime, it's tough to try to educate the public at large with that. But we'll think on how, how can we do that? Kind of the point, if you adopt this, maybe we can come back with it, you know, let, hey, boy, there's some things we can do and insert into the text that really does make that relationship more clear. So it's not like it just goes away as a thought, or a policy or something else to do, but we wouldn't actively propose anything in the next two weeks, say. This is an ongoing thing that we've got to learn how we can better relate to our public and help them understand the process, the development process, and again, zoning and comp plan things. So, I don't have that solution. If I did, we would have implemented it years ago. Because again, this is an outstanding thing that just, I think inherent to zoning and comp plan is just confusing.
So is there a simple, something you can put in there? Because I, I know this comes up today, is you're asking for an R8, everyone's concerned about the R8, and really, it's an R4 that wants the setbacks of an R8. Is there a way that you can clarify that in, in this low-density, no more than three per acre, however, you can configure it in a number of different ways?
Madam Mayor, we could add some, some, I mean, we could add that language and maybe that's the beefing up that, that is looked for in some of these, you know, to say, you know, medium does not mean, you know, that R4 or R8. It means you'll, you'll have between three and eight dwelling units per acre and that can be accomplished a variety of different ways with, you know, clustering lots that may be 2,000 square feet, so you can get a five-acre park next to it. I'm open to some of those things, we just, we haven't gone that way because there are a lot of different ways you could skin the cat. And I don't want that to even be taken, well, that's how you have to do it then, there, the text says you have to have 2,000 square foot lots with a five-acre park next to it. So, again, I don't, I don't have that silver bullet, I wish I did, because this is something that even Madam Mayor just now, zoning, the, the, R4, there's nothing in our UDC that talks about density. R4 does not mean four dwelling units per acre, R8 doesn't, we removed that years ago. Yet, people still think R8 means up to eight dwelling units per acre. Does not.
Right.
Okay, so remove sample zoning.
Okay.
Brian.
Madam Mayor, I, just on your question there, there is, and I don't have the page number in front of me now because I'm looking on the, the mobile-friendly version, but there is a, a new kind of blue box in the plan that does have a conversation about future land use and zoning and, and being different. So that is in their, it doesn't say which ones are which, but it does, it does describe them together as being different things. So there is some, there is some quote "help" in there now, without getting into the weeds of which one goes where.
We've developed handouts and other things, and again, you know, we're trying, we really are trying to kind of bridge that gap, but...
It's on page 38.
Density ranges, I didn't hear anybody have any concerns with that. That, again, more of just the disclosure, that's a change to the way we've historically done business there. And then again, low would be the lowest we have if there's not a new designation. I don't know if there's much to talk about there, if there's not a uber-low. Pause on this one though, unless you want to go back.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, if we could just go back, just to make sure, the recommendation on the right is the recommendation that would proceed to the new draft you're bringing back, if there's any questions or...
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
With the new proposed designation, sorry, Madam Mayor, for clarification, you're saying the new designation to be applied to the P&amp;Z recommendation here, or to leave it as is?
Madam Mayor, the P&amp;Z recommendation, which has the green low-density, which has a more, a different definition now, but the map is as is on the right.
Madam Mayor, my apologies, I, I, I'm clear now, thank you.
What just saying, and we're moving along, so I hate to do this, but if, if you wanted us to figure out where we're going to use a new designation, that would be more than a two-week process, right? That, that, that's a lot of work, so, again, so magic bridge then.
Well, Madam Mayor, so, we're done with Russler?
Go back.
So, my only issue with the, the Russler area is that I, I just honestly really believe that this identity in this, this area should be kept, and I appreciate what staff has done. My, my only concern with this area is, are the buffers. I don't know if I necessarily like having up to three units bordering this area. I would, I would prefer it to be lower than three units per acre. And so, that would be my only concern in regard to just surrounding this, this area.
But I think with the new language that answers...
It can. I guess it's like up one to three, I guess, so it could be. Density in the new definition is one to three, I guess, so I guess that makes sense.
So, Madam Mayor, if I can just, maybe I'll use the pointer. So with the new text and this designation, so first of all, and this is going to be going the wrong way from where you were concerned, this designation would actually allow up to eight dwelling units per acre next to these homes. The text we've added though say, the first block here, you better make a really nice buffer, an open space, or at a minimum one-acre lots there, or larger. They can be larger, but they have to be at least one acre. But it will be higher density as you get away from them, it'll transition from that. So I just want to be clear that there will, there'll be at least three dwelling units per acre over all of this, but that won't be adjacent to them. It'll be internal or further away or whatever.
Good.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
You know it's mortifying to maybe say something that's not the favorite thing of the majority of the people in the room, so I'll go first. I am fine with the recommendation. I don't think, think, thinking long-term, which is the point of the plan, that the reality is, the properties as they exist now, if they would stay that way, then, then so be it. But as a planning purpose, we have to go on the assumption that that may change. And if it were to change, this is what makes sense. Because that freeway is not going to get any quieter, no matter how many Teslas you put on there. The tire's on the pavement, not the engine sound.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I, I think that's, it's spot-on. I think that's the long-term decision-making that might be difficult in the short term. But when I read the mixed-use neighborhood definition and what it's to be, I think that does fit in this, in long-term, it might be 50 years before any of these properties ever stop being low-density residential. But when that day comes that these properties make their choice to sell and develop, I think their choice will be best fit with the mixed-use neighborhood uses in the comp plan. So, the recommendation makes the most sense to me as well. And I didn't initially feel that way, but I think that's the best long-term planning tool.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burt.
This has been a toughie for me, for obvious reasons. There's been a lot of confusion and there's been a lot of even recent emails that we received talking about, you know, you know, streets going down the middle of this development or people being forced out of their homes in order for development to occur. And, and I don't know where that information has come from, but that couldn't be further from the truth. It is literally against the law for, 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 to enforce any type of eminent domain for private development. It cannot happen. And so, if you guys choose not to sell your homes, then you can live there for as long as you want. So, I echo the, the words of Mr. Palmer and Mr. Borton, that if you want to live in your house for the next 50 years, and this use is going, even if a, a private developer wants to come in and change it, if you don't want to sell, you don't have to sell. So, I, I, I don't want there to be any miscommunication regard to a road that's going to go down the middle of it anytime soon, or people having to be forced to sell their properties in order for that to happen. I don't know of any conversation that I've heard and, in, in regard to, to that. And so, in the long-term aspect of what this property, or what this area, what the highest and best use is going forward in the future, whenever, whenever that might be, I, I believe that mixed, mixed-use neighborhood and what's per, what's been proposed by P&amp;Z Commission is, and, and staff is, is what we need to go with.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I've really gone back and forth on this one, but I tend to agree with what's been said, but it could be years. But I think we've still got a lot of confusion regarding the difference between annexation and zoning is not what a future land use designation is. And I think, I don't know if there's a way that we can help that area understand that what they've got isn't changing because the flume changes, or if that's like too big an ask to try to help them work through that. Because we saw the love and the passion for that area, and it doesn't change because we changed the designation on the map. And I don't think they understood that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I'll kind of echo everyone else's, his comments. I actually, I think that the residents do understand this. I think that we've had some really engaged people be involved in this process at the citizen level, and I've seen the TV stories and I've read the newspaper stories about this particular area. I think, I think our citizens do get what the change could potentially be. You know, they're looking at it from, this is their home where they've lived for a significant amount of time. And, you know, we're, as a body, are looking at what this will likely look like when we're all gone, you know, 100 years from now. And so, that's where that, I think, conflict falls. Fact of the matter is, I don't think a city council committee would ever approve low-density residential adjacent to the interstate. You just would never do that. And so, I applaud staff for making the, going through the rigamarole on this, P&amp;Z. I, I agree with the P&amp;Z recommendation. I mean, if I were to make any change, it would be to push the commercial out a little bit further that we see on the adopted plan. But by and large, the part that most of the testimony's been about, about the mixed-use neighborhood, I think is an appropriate designation. For the first time, I think we're all in agreement.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
This might be another one. I thought your, your suggestion, Councilwoman Laura Roberts brought it up as well, seemed to fit as a reasonable compromise and meet the interests of, let blend the interests, at least, of all of the information that we received, where the, was it Purdum? Being the alternate divider of land industrial north of the tracks.
So at Councilman Mylan's request, I, I'm prepared... So, at Councilman Mylan's request, I, I'm prepared to go through these one by one if, if, seems like we've made it through the other one, so that, that seems appropriate to me as well. And Brian, Brian has something. I'll get the map up while he's...
Madam Mayor, uh, Council, just a, a quick clarification on the list Caleb just had up. ACHD is not asking us to, uh, remove that area from, that, remove that property from our area of city impact at this time. The, the bigger ask is change it to industrial to reflect what's west and east, and then there may be a request in the future to do that. Uh, they haven't decided whether they want to go to Meridian or to Boise yet. They're heading, just make it industrial regardless, is the request.
And that certainly takes an M U R G out of the middle of two industrial. I, it seems odd, so, makes sense.
Okay. I'm glad Brian clarified that, so it sounds like that's a fairly recent request, so, request then, we have, and we have representation requests from all three of those property owners. Um, without getting too much into this, this request to change this to general industrial was made within the last couple of years, and at that time, we questioned leaving behind these parcels. If we're going to change this much of a mixed-use regional designation, why not change the whole thing? We just didn't have consent from these property owners at that time. This one seems to be pretty clean, so, um, everyone, again, hasn't gone through that process, hasn't been through the steering committee, hasn't been through the public, but seems, seems pretty clean. Um, the next request, then again, is off of Pine, Hickory, Rosario, this area here. Again, I'll toggle. So, the, the draft, sorry, I should have started with the adopted. Adopted has industrial on all of this, um, area. Giraffe proposes to take some of that to a mixed-use community designation. Um, some property owners, and then their, I don't remember what his title is, he represents the Business Owners Association, or I received a letter today, um, requesting that that not be, to go to mixed-use non-residential. Um, I haven't ground-truth that, I don't know, this used to be Dennis Baker's, I'm not even quite sure who owns it today. Actually, we could...
Um, Sensi owns it.
Sensi owns a lot of this, and that's who the letter today we got from was, Sensi controls a lot of this land around here, and that's who the letter, uh, came from, was Sam Johnson, Gem Town Center Owners Association President, who, again, also works for Sensi, um, concurring with what, um, Becky McKay requested last week, that this go to mixed-use non-residential. So, again, that would be this, this area here. Um, and that, staff doesn't believe that's inappropriate. Um, we haven't done the full analysis on, was that due to our, our portfolio of land uses, but again, on its face, doesn't seem to be bad, a bad thing to go to. We're proposing a change anyways from industrial to, to mixed-use, so, to go to mixed-use non-residential, flavor of mixed-use change doesn't seem to be drastic.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
A question, another question for Van over there. Do you feel like you want to do some more analysis on that? I mean, is, are you comfortable with that, that change? Or...
Honestly, this one, and I, I hate to just sort of flippantly say, yeah, this is okay. I think that this is probably appropriate. Again, we, we were, we had analyzed already for a change to mixed-use anyways. It's that flavor of mixed-use and the difference between mixed, the mixed-use flavor that had been vetted through the steering committee and what they're requesting for. The only difference is, it doesn't allow residential.
There seems to be...
Their CCNRs prohibit residential, so it seems like there's not a whole lot to really...
There's a lot of residential over there.
Right. Over here, today, you're seeing a whole bunch of residential going just adjacent. So, again, no, I'm pretty comfortable with this, with tho, those things being really the only things we've considered, but that seems pretty straightforward. Um, the next one, Locust Grove and McMillan. Kind of this, this area up here is, is largely the request the entire thing has, currently has, um, mixed-use neighborhood designation, and the request is to go to commercial.
Any comments from Council on that? Any issues with...
Madam Mayor, I, I don't have any issues.
And southwest corner of Amity and Meridian, so you did not hear testimony, although the same law firm that represents this property owner also, um, represents the, the property owner at Amity and Meridian. Um, they did testify at Planning and Zoning Commission, and we have talked to them as staff, and, um, sorry, it's taken me a while to get there. Close. Um, it is this property here, they do have a letter, it was quite lengthy, I think it was like 30 pages, um, but it included both of those recommendations, so the one we just talked about, Locust Grove and McMillan, and this one, so that is in your packet. It does not include, um, turn this off for just a second, does not include this parcel, but it's everything else that's, uh, here. Uh, their request is to go from medium-density residential to either commercial or mixed-use community. Um, this, this one, we struggle with a little bit more, but I'm not going to get into all of, this one has been vetted a little bit more. Um, again, we aren't going to say it's the worst idea in the world if you, um, in fact, it may be appropriate, wholly appropriate, to go to mixed-use community or commercial. It's just with, absent any other real development proposal to tag along with it, um, that was really the hang-up from the steering committee and staff, was to just give them a, a, that designation without some guarantee of how that's going to transition to the residential and access to the state highway and some of those things that you can really kind of tie down with a development proposal. But, again, medium-density residential here, I'm not going to say that makes a whole lot of sense either, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
At first blush, that doesn't give me any concern either. Again, going back and reading the, the text of intent with the mixed-use community and what it is generally intended to provide for, similar to the project on McMillan, and seeing how it can expand available uses of the property maybe in a more efficient way, seems to fit.
I, I guess I would agree with staff and the steering committee, without seeing what the intent is, it, it could generate a lot of trips, and they're all going through neighborhoods.
Yep.
So, leaving it to a future council to make the decision based on a proposal, at this point, um, seems to, to at least have a little bit more discretion than leaving it, the current designation, which is compatible to what it would be driving through.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I'm, I'm in agreement with you. I think that the current designation that's been assigned seems appropriate. A change may be warranted, but without a lot of information, just because we're being asked doesn't necessarily mean we need to make the change. So, I'm, I'm more supportive of leaving it as is, recognizing that the owner wants to make a change, can bring a compelling reason to us at a future time.
And this, this one has a lot of challenges with access out of there, so it just... Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I, I agree. I, I mean, I look at it every day when I pass it, and I'm, I'm all, I've lived there my whole life, and, and every time I've driven all around that, I'm like, what are they going to do with this property someday? Um, so, yeah, I don't know. Change it now, change it later, but, uh, hopefully, future councils listening like, this one may make sense, even if it's sooner than later, when there's something to actually look at. For now, it's like, what do you do?
So, designation stays the same?
Keep...
Change to that one, okay. Then, the last one that, again, I, I think that is, at least in, of more recent, um, requests, would be the 40 acres there at, it's bisected then by, uh, future state highway 16. We received that letter yesterday. It's currently, what you see on the map here is, this designation is mixed-use interchange. Um, it calls for a mix of uses, like our other mixed-use designations, but a little less intensity on the retail or auto-dominated side, um, because of its proximity to an interchange. So, we weren't hoping for convenience stores and things with a lot of trips, because you're already going to have it kind of inherently, a lot of trips there, and that conflicts with what the property owner wholly wants to do with their property, but certainly in the influence of the interchange. If you read their letter, some of what they would like to do is not consistent with that, that designation, so they've requested, um, mixed-use, again, mixed-use regional instead of mixed-use interchange. So, flavor of mixed-use, still mixed-use, but it wouldn't, it would be a little more lenient towards, or less restrictive on the types of commercial uses you could get, uh, in that designation.
Madam Mayor, example would be, Caleb?
A, a convenience store.
Would be allowed.
A gas station. Well, with appropriate zoning, you potentially could do that. On the, the comp plan currently would say, those are the types of uses we aren't looking for. So, that flavor, there's some real impacts there. I guess the other thing I would just say is, um, this area is part of the fields area that we did that specific outreach to. We spent quite a bit of time developing a concept for, you know, this, this entire area, that if you look at the difference between adopted and draft future, it's substantially different. I'm not here to tell you that if you made this change, this is going to tank the whole land use plan, but we did spend a whole lot of time on developing this concept for that area. Again, recognizing this gets bisected, there's some, some real implications, but I do want to just point that out, that we were pretty intentional about how much commercial and the type of commercial, and how much density, and where the density to kind of get this community within a community kind of feel here. And now, if we potentially allow more of those services to go to the fringe, you're less likely to see some of those neighborhood-serving potentials, uses in this area. So, again, I'm not saying this is totally tanks it, but there, but this, but we did look at this area with a little, little, there's opportunity here, right? And we looked at it that way, like, there's, there's, there's an opportunity out here, so, leave it at that.
But, I mean, really, the decision was already made in that quadrant, so, it changed. So... What's council's direction?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I'm not opposed to, to the change. Um, I think holistically, you achieved kind of what was set out. You know, it's a lot of what-if statements, what if X happens and Y's going to occur, what goes first, so, I don't see any issues with granting the change. I think it's appropriate.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
You, I mean, kind of using your gas station example, um, I went to Mountain View, and we hit it with a Maverick right there. Well, there's another Maverick one mile away, there's another, there's a Shell already one mile away. The, high schools create kind of a weird microeconomic bubble...
Right, yeah.
That having a little bit of additional flexibility to, to be able to use the, the property in a, in a way that could be determined later, I think only benefits everybody, given the weird circumstances that high schools create in a tiny area.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Councilmember Palmer's spot-on. I think the, the school location, to me, is that kind of necessary reason that I'm supportive of the change. You look at Mountain View, you look at Rocky, I mean, you're right, it's these like, almost to Caleb's point, micro-communities that spring up around these schools, and those necessary amenities seem to make sense, so, seems like a good decision.
I see nods.
So, I think we made it through the list. I, I'm, you know, again, you have some other testimony there that, that wasn't here. Um, those are the, those are the ones that we... So, if I can, just continue on. I, looking at the calendar, and I talked with Brian a little bit, um, it's not quite two weeks, but with the holiday coming up and us to make some of these changes that we talked, again, pretty, pretty straightforward, 17th is what, if, everything you just said, I mean, that, that gives us a little bit of time to make these changes, to put, and I guess the way I would propose that to you is, and again, no pressure, but we would bring it back to you with the, the cover being a resolution to adopt it with these changes. If you don't like it, don't adopt the resolution. Um, but if, if, if it does everything we talked about tonight, if that's the direction, then the 17th, um, the 10th is a little too quick. Without getting to kind of other balls that are in the air, um, I don't know that we can deliver it. Um, we would try, if you really wanted it on the 10th, we would try, but it makes it a little difficult, so.
Madam Mayor.
And we see if you can try to make the 10th.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Madam, I guess my question was going to be if, oh, so, sorry, Dean, if the 17th is the date, in terms of getting that document out to the public, is that something that would then hit the street on the 13th, or would there be a way to get it out to the public sooner? And maybe that's to, I think maybe where Madam Mayor's trying to head is to get this in front of people sooner rather than later.
So, Councilman Kavner, I mean, we, we'll, we'll make it available just as soon as we can, right? I mean, the, the, the longer it can be part of what we send to the clerk, the better. The, again, the 10th, the clerk's typical deadline then would be the 5th, which is next Thursday. Tomorrow's a half-day, Thursday and Friday are holiday. That means I have Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday to make these changes, get a resolution together and get it to clerk, and that only gives the public the weekend to look at it. Again, we can shoot for the 10th, Madam Mayor, if that's, if that's what the direction is. Seems a little aggressive, but, um, but I get it. It doesn't give you a whole lot of leeway in the rest of the year either, so.
Sure. You don't want to meet on Christmas Eve?
No.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Amongst the 17th as an option, the 4:30, I'm swat, could be something we use. Unless we don't want to, but...
Madam Mayor.
In fact, you could have it 4:30 and 6:00.
Sorry.
Mad, Madam Mayor, I, I was, Councilmember Burton got to, I think, the conclusion I was going to draw is, I would want to do it at both. The question is, is that meeting then a, a public hearing, or not?
Uh, you, you are adding new verbiage that, um, I would say so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
We're never going to not read our emails. We'll, we'll always, we'll still receive testimony, um, but I feel like we've made changes based on testimony received, made decisions, and...
Well, and you would continue this only for a specific, um, reason to receive testimony on that.
Changes?
On, yeah.
And Madam Mayor, by testimony, you mean live testimony at the hearing, correct?
Yep.
Madam Mayor, would you like some legal, legal guidance?
We always would appreciate legal guidance, especially if we need it.
Sure. Um, when you were contemplating remanding, going back to the steering committee, I went to the statute, um, that tells you how you're supposed to adopt this. And from what I can tell, the steering committee is a City of Meridian invention that was directed at getting a, a, a plan in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that's where the state statute starts. Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to you. That's why you're here. Here's the language that I want you to consider, whether you decide to, uh, continue it for verbal testimony, and it gets down to what you consider to be material. It says, "If the governing board, which is you, makes a material change in the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission concerning the..." from the Planning and Zoning Commission concerning the adoption amendment or repeal of the plan, further notice and hearing shall be provided before the governing board adopts, amends, or repeals the plan." So, I've made some notes as you were talking about these. Councilman Cavanagh is the only one who seemed to think it was a big, major change. I saw other members talk about tweaks and organic changes to the testimony that was brought before you, so it's really up to you to decide, do you think this is material enough to ask for a hearing on, only on the matters that have been changed?
Thank you, Mr. Baird.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
In light of that, is what we've suggested to do within the bounds of the statute?
If that suggestion was, continue it for verbal testimony on the changes, yes. That would be, that would comply with the intent of the statute.
Okay. Spot-on.
And my thought was, Planning and Zoning Commission members are free to come and testify. Steering Committee members are free to come and testify, so you'll get that all wrapped up in one hearing.
And we can make sure to put an invitation out to both when we have the changes.
Madam Mayor, and I think that's appropriate, and just sending them a copy, you know, all over commissioners and steering committee, all a copy, same time the council gets it, so. That's efficient.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
As to the idea of having it on at the 4:30 and the 6:00, is that the plan?
Madam Mayor, I'm supportive of that.
Yes, and would ask the clerk to have this as the only 6 o'clock item.
Madam Mayor, are you referring to the 17th?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
And, and then, I guess, council, if that is the case, because we don't have a meeting after that, this would show up under Old Business, then on January 7th, for the decision-makers to do the final yea-nay.
Madam Mayor.
I understand, yes.
Question for legal then is, if I'm hearing you right, you could have, if this body wants...
If you made a motion on the 17th.
Before the swearing-in of the new mayor and council. Okay.
And that could be at the 4:30.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Baird.
I'll bring my name back next time.
I only call you Ted, so, you know, it's just Ted.
I appreciate that. In following through what, what Caleb said, if you ask for the resolution on the 17th, you've made it clear what you're expecting. You'll get testimony. If you decide to make further changes, you hold off on acting on that resolution, but legal can help get the resolution in front of you on the 17th, should you decide to act at that time. You've got the option of putting it off, as you just discussed.
Thank you. We love options. Choices. Counsel, anything further?
Madam Mayor, one last thing.
Mr. Baird.
I don't mean to belabor anything. I was just reading my notes, and I wanted to make sure with Caleb and Brian, one last question. In the past, we've spoke about the five specific, you know, big changes to the flume that were highlighted, you know, embedded through the steering committee and staff and, and ourselves. We were going to leave those areas as hashed areas. We make those changes in... I know we spoke about it multiple times. And the reason why I say that is, I, I know the reason why. I know there's some that want specific area plans in regard to those areas. I understand why that we're not going to do that, but maybe it would be smart to leave those areas, you know, highlighted, just so that future developers understand the reasoning behind why we want to keep those specific areas with, with a certain type of identity that's important to those areas. And so, it's just, it's a simple move, but has, I believe, important consequences.
So, Madam Mayor, yes, we can disclose, as we talk with potential developers of those property owners. I will just tie this back in with the conversation earlier, that we have four budget amendments that we're sitting on. One of them is to do specific area plans on two of the areas you just mentioned. So, that's coming almost 1-2. Again, I don't want to make too many assumptions here, but if on the 17th, budget amendments to do specific area plans, there won't be a lot of lag time and...
It's just, I get, Madam Mayor, it's just a matter of, like, putting, like, gray stripes along the areas. Pretty easy thing to do. So, just nod on that. Something that I've gotten a lot of calls from, from people who are really interested, and I've, and I've promised that we weren't going to, you know, not to worry that, you know, there will be specific area plans designated for those certain areas. My opinion, residents shouldn't have any reason to believe that, you know, we're going to do anything otherwise, but just to, just to make sure that there's no confusion on what our future reasoning is with those, with those specific areas.
Madam Mayor, if I can, sorry for the conversation, but we will relay to anybody that comes in our door in the interim, we are targeting those areas for, even, so I can't just put gray lines on there unless you direct that. Like, I can't... If that's, if you want to vet that through the rest of the council, and that's what you want on the future land use map, we can do that. I can't have another version of the future land use map in my office and say...
Right.
But we can verbally tell them, "We are targeting this. We are going to move in on projects that put more details into this area. Highly, highly, highly recommend you not do what you're potentially talking about doing right now. Come along with us as we plan a development for that area specifically." So, we can verbally share that, those intents and things, but, again, absent that, I can't make gray lines or dash lines where they don't exist.
Madam Mayor, is this council pro, opposed to that? Are we opposed to doing that, just that little minor change to the flume?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'm not. It's just, it's a heads-up designation.
Right, that's all it is.
Doesn't do anything more than that, but there's some value in that. Keeps our eye on the ball.
You could call it the H-U-D designation, heads-up designation.
Madam Mayor, I thought we were almost done, and this is going to open up a new can, which is fine. I, it's, you mentioned five, I think, you just said five, and Brian and I were trying to think of what all five of them were. So, a couple of things, we're going to need to figure out what those areas are, and then we're going to have to, you know, we've got to put it in the legend, and we've got to come up with some text for the, for the plan that says what that, what the function is of this gray hash line. So, we don't have that for you now. As the closest thing we've had historically, back in the day, we used to have this area designated as a feature planning area.
That's fine.
And we had some, some text with that, but I don't have that in my back pocket right now. We could potentially repurpose that here, or some version of that. Again, the five areas though, so Overland and Eagles, one of them, right? Jade Jewel, Rolling Hill, where am I? Yeah, right here.
Fields.
Kind of look at this, the Fields area, the Magic, Magic Bridge, Magic View Woodbridge area.
Somewhere in the southwest Meridian.
You're going to have to help me out a little bit more than that. Is that between Lake Hazel and Columbia? Like, I don't know where.
I didn't realize it was going to be this complicated.
Maybe.
Yeah, forget what he said. No one supports him.
It's not lost, though.
Tough to have this discussion right now without having some specific areas, but we have, we have, like, you know, three or four right now, maybe with conversation in the future of other areas.
I think staff is coming back with recommendations on those, those areas, that they want specific area plans or more detail to the districts, and that will come back in your budget amendment.
Madam Mayor, if I can, just, yes, and to channel Councilman Palmer for a minute, if there's more of these in the future, right? If, if there's other fixes, or what did you say? Fixed screw-ups or other areas, right? We, that, there is an option, right? In three months, if you say, "You know what? Staff, go study this area for a specific area plan." We can add a gray hash line and, and go study that too. So, this isn't one-and-done. This plan is, can be, again, we take amendments seriously, so I'm not trying to be funny here, but you can do that in the future, too.
Madam Mayor, if I can jump in, just to temper expectations, so, and, because you guys have used specific words, specific area plans, we're not envisioning all of these being specific area plans. An example would be the Overland area. Half of that's under development right now, right? We're mostly concerned there with transportation and access, so we could potentially, and I don't know, but it might just be a changed ACHD's master street map or working with them on something, so. Not all these areas are going to have, at least as we've discussed and contemplated, specific area plans. Certainly, there are some planning areas, but a specific area plan may not be the outcome for all of these.
And I, I think because Caleb, council doesn't know where those recommendations you are, if you could bring, if you could get something out so they have a heads-up on some of the intention and on, on the areas that you're doing the budget amendment, that would be helpful, because that would cover some of those areas you're, you're probably referring to. Southern River is one of the areas. Was there anything else? From council or staff? We'll need a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Would we continue Item 7E to December 17th at 4:30 and at 6:00?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to...
Madam Mayor.
We want to do a specific, a public hearing specific to certain items.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
To continue the public hearing for the receipt of written or live testimony concerning the changes that were made to the draft plan at today's city council meeting. And Reese.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, Item 8A is ordinance 1981864. Mr. Clerk, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an ordinance related to H. 2018-0051 Creamline Park, for reason of a parcel being described for rezon purpose, being all of lots 1, 2, 9, and 10, and a portion of lots 3 and 8 of Block 1 of Creamline Park subdivision, as shown in Book 99 of Platts on pages 12,784 through 12,787, records of Ada County, Idaho, and located in the western one-half of the southwestern one-quarter of Section 12 Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification from CG, general retail, and service commercial zoning district to IL, light industrial zoning district, to in the City of Meridian code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing for an effective date.
Heard this read by title. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety? Seeing none. Counsel. I have a motion.
We don't have Genesis. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Move your approval ordinance number 19-1864 with suspension rules.
Second.
A motion in a second to, to approve Item 8A. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Any items for nine? If not, I would entertain a motion under Item 10 for executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Would we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 742061F?
Second.
A motion in a second to adjourn any to executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.